We are at eight o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order if we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone for public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Minutes from September sixteenth. Motion by Hawes.
Second.
Second by Stecker. Discussion on the agenda or minutes. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Discussion decision approved, handwritten claim. Moved approved by Stecker. Need a second? Second by Garmin. Discussion on handwritten claim. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll go to library update. Good morning, Laurie.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Lori Walton, director of the Algonquin Public Library, and I brought Sonia Harsher with me today because she is our young adult and adult programming librarian. And we'd like to update you on what we accomplished and what we're doing all summer. So she's gonna tell you about it. She and Kristi Allison were the two main people who planned the programming this summer. Now Lori just asked me to give you kind of a whirlwind tour of the library through the months of June and half of July. So this is our summer reading program and the slides up here. Our theme this year was Level Up at the Algonquin Public Library. And we had our kickoff program. We brought Adult Hand from Des Moines, and he runs a game program. And we had 259 people come to play games and have a fun time, pick up the reading logs, just get introduced to the summer program. But 259 is just a portion of the total number of people who register for our program. We had close to 650 people register for our summer program this year, including 150 adults. And so it's a large program. As we, as every, you know, library does storytimes, we do storytimes in the summer. We bring some special guests in. We had the Fair Queen do a storytime for us. We had the owners of Daylight Donuts come. And we had an average of 55 attendees at our storytimes this summer. And except for our goat storytime, we had 250 people show up to meet the two little baby goats that came to the library. So lots of fun at the library. We also took our storytime on the road, and we were out at the pool this summer. We had 20 to 30 people once a week who joined, you know, find out at the pool and joined us for stories. We also do a variety of activities through the summer. And all of these activities and events are free to our patrons and to our community. So there's no charge for anything. So we did some morning movies. We had 375 attendees in each of the three weeks that we did this in June. We did some marble painting, which was a fun use of our maker space that we're working on developing. We had Game Day snacks, where we had 18 teenagers come and create some fun snacks with me. Perler beads was another popular program. We had 48 attendees at that program of all ages. We had parents working with their very young children there, too. We had some guest presenters this year. Speed cubing. Ethan DeGroot is a local graduate, and he came back to do some cubing with us and taught them how to do it even faster because he competes with speed cubing. Minecraft, we had a young man who has his own website, and he teaches coding through the use of Minecraft. He did three days of two workshops, and so he did a total of 15 hours of programming for us. And we had 69 kids participate in our afternoon programs. And we had an evening program where it was open just to teens and adults, and we had 20 teens and adults coming to play Minecraft at the library. We also brought some authors this summer. Karen Land talked about her participation in the Iditarod race. We had 80 people attend that, and they enjoyed seeing her put all of her layers and layers and layers of clothing on to keep herself from freezing to death out there in Alaska. Ben Wolf came through a collaboration with the Algonquin Community School Foundation. And he brought, the participants received a blank journal and a pencil and an eraser. And he spent several hours working with the kids, where he taught the steps of writing, and he talked about careers. So he was introducing young people to what it is to be an author. And that was also part of our summer school collaboration, because they brought the summer school kids. Summer school kids came to the library once a week. They checked out books. They got the chance to see what we're doing at the library, and they got the chance to meet that author. So that author visit had 116 people who attended that program. We also collaborated with the ISU Extension for some senior programming. We did a downsizing for senior living. We continue to do collaborations with different organizations in the community, and the ISU Extension is one of those organizations. We also had a variety of game-themed events, because Level Up, you know, Level Up is kind of a game term. So we had Game Show Party. That was very fun. We had a lot of participants and families participating together. Game Day was again just a fun time to come, learn some old-fashioned games. You see marbles there. We also had several other older games that we were teaching kids. And as we moved into July, we had an escape room that was totally developed and run by our two interns this summer. And we had 99 escapees and lots of requests to do that again. We had a week of clue-themed scavenger hunt. And we had 52 people participate in our clue game throughout the library. And our techie Tanner ran over the body by the copier with the book card, so it was very fun. We also like to evaluate what we do, and so we have a kind of start, maintain, stop. One of the things that we did for the first time this year that we will definitely continue is that we started to have texting as a way of communication, and people really seem to appreciate that texting form of communication. We have participation and completion numbers that I mentioned. We had close to 650 people who signed up to be a part of our summer program. And we have seen a continual increase in the number of participants and the completion rates. Some fast facts for you, and these fast facts, just to give you an idea of how summer is affected at the library. We see programming numbers double, just simply in the number of programs, but we also see the attendance increase by 1,000 coming into the library during the summer. Our door count has also seen that trend to go upward. If you notice, in 2025, between May in our regular door count to June, we increased by 2,500 people coming into the library in one month. So it's a lot of people coming in through our doors. And our circulation stats, you see, on that total, we had books going out throughout the month of June to the middle of July. 6,293 books got checked out from the library in that time period. So lots of use of the library. Our computers are constantly full with young people. Sometimes they come in 9:30 in the morning, and they don't leave until 6:30 in the evening. We close at seven. They don't even leave for lunch. We wonder, you know?
Some of them are not bringing their lunch in. We had one yesterday who had her mom deliver some food.
So, you know, we are a very busy place, especially in the summer. We have, generally, we've seen a drop after the Fourth of July. This year, we did not. From the day school got out to the day before school went back, kids were in the library. So if you wondered where the kids were, you might come visit the library, you would find them there. Even after school now, it continues, that they are hanging out and playing games with their friends, just doing things in the library. Because we have a lot of resources, a lot of activities, you know, just a lot of things for the community to do there. We also wanted to publicly recognize those, the local businesses and organizations that do support us, both monetarily and in their time and in donations to the library. We had some new collaborations this year with the Community School Foundation and the Donald Teeds Charitable Foundation. The Teeds Foundation supported our interns, and Rotary supports our interns. The Zeroptomists were a part of making it possible for us to have the two interns this summer. We see, you know, just donations from a large number of our local community, and we just really do appreciate their support. Our summer programming is run mostly by grants and donations. And so we just are thoroughly thankful for the community support that we have. And, you know, so that's, you know, one of the challenges that we do have is continually looking for ways to support the program, because as you can see, we run a big program. And, you know, we want to continue to offer that community support to our community. I also want to mention, too, that we not only have participants from Algonquin, but we had 20 different communities represented, and those who signed up for our summer programs. So we see support through the entire county. And those other, the other county libraries, they also get reciprocal support from those who've come to us, because we encourage them to do both our program and other programs.
So again, like Sonia said, we are grateful for the community's support. We're also very thankful for the support that you and the city give us, because with your support, we're able to offer the facility, the staff, and the technology to make all of this happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions? We have a wonderful staff at the library, and I mentioned Sonia and Kristi, but it's the entire staff that made that summer happen and continues to offer excellent programming and different opportunities to the community. So again, thank you. I have one more thing. You may have heard that the DAR, the local DAR in the Algonquin Public Library are sponsoring the American Revolution Experience. It ends this week, but if you have the opportunity to just walk through the N A and take a look at this display, it is, I feel very impressive. We are very fortunate to have it. It is going to cities like Las Vegas, Nevada, Chattanooga, Tennessee, and Algonquin, Iowa. So Iowa has several different places that you can go to see this. But it's very fortunate that Algonquin has gotten it. We have had a number of student classes come in. It's been really thrilling to see the teachers who have prepared lessons, students come in, and then the DAR people are in full dress costumes, playing the role of somebody in the revolution. So one more thing you can do. It ends Thursday, but if you have a chance, please come in. Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate the update. Yeah, thank you. C construction. Oh, move on to this then. Okay. Okay, we are up to our public hearing for hog confinement construction permit for Red Owl Farms Two LLC, the Seneca Finisher Farm site. This is in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 18 of Greenwood Township. So I will need a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by what? Second by Stecker. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hawes.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wacter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes. Public hearing is open. And any comments from Iowa Select first that you'd like to make, or?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that this is a pre-existing site. Iowa Select bought it four years ago. And recently had a routine DNR inspection in doing so. We rescored part of the master matrix, so that is the cause of this hearing today. Worked with Corey Peterson here at the county courthouse. The matrix did not change after the rescoring, but as you know, this hearing has part of that process. Any questions for me? Here, anybody need to leave?
He is correct on that. I went over and remeasured. And remeasured all the properties within, and actually with the score in the master matrix previously, the well was actually not factored in on the scoring. The scoring is the same as what ours. What they found was that for the score in the master matrix, they'd like to have the setback doubled from 100 foot to be 200 foot, and it was actually 186 feet, so it's 14 foot short, so that's why we're here.
The rules changed from 100 to 200? Is that what I heard right here?
No, no. So the actual, the setback from, for the well would be 100 feet. For the master matrix, for that scoring, it needs to be 200. And it is not. It is 186.
So they just don't get points for that?
Correct, which they previously did not. So that's, that is not factored into the score, which they were previously given.
Yep.
So is there anything physically changing on site at all?
No. It was just due to the section, and they measured that out, and it was within the, it was under the 200, so.
Okay.
Anything else to highlight for us?
There is not. It's a.
Okay. I'll move to close.
Well, is there any other public comment first? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing, second by Garmin. Any discussion? Not roll call vote, please.
Hawes.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wacter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes. Okay, motion carried. And do I need to read this then?
The resolution?
Yep. It's not written on. I don't need it either. Okay. Okay, we need to approve Resolution Number 09232501. Got a motion by Stecker to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Wacter. Any discussion on approving the resolution? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Hawes.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wacter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes. Motion carried. Resolution is approved. Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I want to give Brandon a call. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Yep.
For the homestead and military appeal letter?
Hey Brandon, it's Jeff from the boardroom. We'll be up to the homestead and military appeal letters here in just a few minutes. All right, thanks.
Well, while we're waiting for Brandon, everyone have a chance to look at the safety and wellness committee minutes. Any questions, or we'll let the record reflect, we acknowledge those. Okay. Morning, Brandon.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brandon.
We are up to discussion decision, the homestead and military appeal letters.
Yes.
I don't know if you wanted to say anything for that, or?
No, I kind of included any packet. Pretty cut and dry on what the law states on what qualifies and what doesn't qualify, so.
Right.
Both recommendations are to disallow. Maybe the one, if they would've gave us a little more information, you know, when they moved and when they came back, it might, you know, qualify. But pretty standard, when you move out of the state, you know, the military kind of goes away. So. Any other questions?
They see it that way, too.
Well, they moved back, they moved back to Iowa, but if they were to live here more than six months out of the year in Iowa, they could have qualified, but.
They didn't.
But we don't know, we don't know what, how many months they lived in Iowa. They never stated in the letter that's in the packet there, so. And that property is sold now, so typically when something sells like that, you know, they don't live there. It gives the new owner a chance to sign up for the homestead and military credit, so.
Did it go to the relative that they were talking about, or don't know?
Oh, that first one. Yeah, there's two of them in there.
Yep.
No, that one never did, so that one's still in that, yeah, never transferred.
And nobody ever lived there?
Well, we're talking about two different properties.
I don't.
Yeah, there's one, the acres, and then the other one. Yeah, I was talking about the other one before with the military. But the other one with the homestead, yeah. He would, he would need to have his name on the deed and.
But he didn't live there anyway, right?
Yeah, he didn't live there anyway. Yeah.
Nobody lived there.
Well, the guy must have moved at some point in time when he forwarded his address to the different address. So. But that one's, one of those tough ones with the homestead is typically an LLC does not qualify. Family farm corporations do qualify, and that's what we think this one is. You know, if the grandson is part of the corporation, and we don't know that either, you know, maybe it would still qualify, but it said in the letter, he never did move in anyway, so then it wouldn't qualify. So.
So do we need to do any more research to figure out, or contact them to get any more information, or?
I don't think so. No, not this time. I think, I think the recommended, you know, action is to disallow them both and let it transfer owners, and then they can sign up when that happens. All right, thanks, guys.
Yep. Thanks, Brandon. Need a motion to some effect here? To, is it, need a motion? I don't have any. Does it need to be ordered, I guess?
To probably approve the disallowances.
Approve the disallowances. Sounds a little bit like an oxymoron.
Did we already approve the disallowances?
That's what I was.
And now we're approving them again?
Well, I think we need to deny.
Because they, the appeal, they appealed.
I think it'd be to just deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal.
Okay.
Okay. Approve the denial of the appeal.
Okay.
Okay, or just a motion to deny the appeal. Yeah. Okay. Anybody want to make that? Huh? Second? Well, call one more time. Is there a second?
Second, or second discussion?
Okay, we got a second by Wacter. Clearly, there's some discussion to be had. Maybe, maybe not.
I'm a little concerned about the first one, if we don't have the full picture or not, but.
What page is that one on, Tom?
113, 112.
13, there we go.
Yep.
I mean, if, if they are part of the corporation and if they live there for six months, I mean, we don't know that yet.
Is that the one where you never ended up moving in?
Yeah.
How do you get a homestead exemption without moving in? Am I right?
They had it.
They had it, and then they removed it, so it was going based upon the.
It, this is appealing, they're removing.
I understand, but if he never lived there, should they have ever had it in the first place?
The original owners had it, and it's transferred into the family. And if I remember right, it's lost, it's transferred into the family, they're part of.
This gentleman who is appealing does not live there, or does? Or was he living there, waiting for his grandson to move in?
Was living there.
That's what I thought, so.
And it says, "Homestead includes a dwelling house in which the owner in good faith is occupying as a home on July 1st of the year, to which the credit is claimed and occupies for at least six months during the calendar year in which the fiscal year begins." So it says, "Change address on July 24th." But. Were they moved at that point, were they partial, I don't know. I mean. And, I mean. I guess the letter was September 3rd of '25 and said he had not moved in yet, so. Maybe it's just a short, or a time period in between where he might not qualify, but I just don't feel confident that we have a full picture of the story.
But this gentleman's not currently living there. Is that the issue? Right.
Right.
He is the one who applied for the homestead.
The last sentence from Brandon does say he will need to deed property from H W Farms into his grandson's name.
But he even just said here that if he was part of the corporation, because that's a corporation, if he was part of it, he might already be eligible without transferring ownership.
Well, what, this is just in general, or is it a deal of a specific year?
You can reapply whenever you move in.
Yeah, it would be a specific year or something.
So, so if we're talking about a year, and it says, "You have to live there on July 1st and six months of that calendar year," did anybody live there six months?
Don't know. Yeah.
Well, is it up to us to chase down the facts?
Probably shouldn't be, but.
I'm not the exception.
No, I don't think the exception. Shouldn't do it either. I think that these people should.
Should at least inform.
When they are appealing, you need to make a good decision.
And at least say, say why.
Based on the facts, which are absent.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's our job. I don't think it's Brandon's job to chase down the facts. If he's, if he's told them what the rules are, you have to then just show us, that's my opinion.
Because all somebody had to say was, "We've been here for six months," yada, yada.
Hits criteria.
This is why we hit, yeah, meet the criteria. Yeah. So.
Yeah, was planning to move in this summer, but didn't. Maybe I'm missing something. I opened to.
It's vague.
It is.
So.
Let's do something.
Well, we got a motion and a second on the floor, so. Anybody have any new points they want to make?
No.
If we, if we don't approve the, or if we don't deny the appeal, what's the course of action?
He just gets it back.
Yeah, they get the credit.
They get the credit back.
We're not gonna ask if we can prove more or anything?
Could, maybe.
I assume there's a deadline of some sort, but I don't know.
That's our bridge, and maybe before we're done with discussion.
Yeah, let's get out of here.
Do you want to call them back?
Maybe. He can answer what the deadline is anyway.
And what the process would be.
Okay. What's that, Judy Sam? We might need to update that. Um.
I can look down and see if he's.
Here, I got it. What's that? Hold on, hold on. Hey, Brandon Carter. Yeah, you still in the courthouse? You just took off, okay. Well, we have a question, we had a question basically, what is the deadline for these? Is there a deadline as far as?
For us making this?
For us making a decision or doing this appeal process? After they make their appeal? Okay, twenty days. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Okay. Thanks, Brandon. Yep, bye. So, yeah, they have twenty days from the date of their appeal. Which is today.
We have twenty days.
We, sorry, yeah, we have twenty days.
And this was September third.
So, today?
His his letter was saying twenty-third.
Okay. And Brandon said they did not leave him any contact information, phone and email, nothing other than an address, so. That's where I'm not sure how to get a hold of them. I mean, they're always a little.
Well, my biggest thing is, is it questionable whether or not this person did live there for six months?
Yeah.
If it, if it is questionable, if he did, then I don't know if I'm comfortable disallowing it, but.
Fiscal year twenty-five ended on June.
June thirtieth.
So, he must have appealed it, or not appealed, excuse me, applied for the homestead exemption. So, that's my understanding, somebody had lived there, by reading it, that somebody had lived there for six months in calendar year.
And if he
Okay.
gave him a change of address, July twenty-fourth, twenty-four, he did.
Am I missing him? You have to explain that to me. Where was the change of address mentioned?
In the letter, for Brandon stated in the letter that on July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, this person called their office to change his mailing address.
So on, and I pulled up the assessor, say, I believe I'm on the correct parcel and stuff, but um, with the current year property tax estimate, it looks like a change of just shy of a hundred bucks. So. Military is significantly more than that, but actually homestead exemption sixty-five plus would be sixty-five hundred, actually, so that's probably the new stuff that the state pushed out.
I think this one is questionable enough to maybe allow a not, not, or how do you wanna move that?
To not deny.
To not deny the appeal. I think that one's questionable, questionable enough and it's hundred percent. But if we get, you know.
Well, actually, that's even.
Twenty-four, twenty-two.
The homestead exemption sixty-five plus would come off the taxable value, so that would change the net taxes due a little over a hundred bucks as well, so, yeah, we're talking between a hundred and two, two fifty total tax dollars.
Okay, so, like you said, Howard, if he moved July twenty-fourth, twenty-two, say, or shortly before that, he occupied the residence, this gentleman who's appealing occupied the residence on July first of last year and was anticipating, so they applied for the upcoming year, was anticipating his grandson to move out there. His grandson hasn't moved out there yet due to whatever reasons, and I think that was probably Brandon's reasoning, then nobody lives there, nobody has lived there for over a year now.
Well, I I don't think I would do to say, I think this is about what happened in twenty-two-four, not what happened in twenty-two-five, correct? Cause that ain't correct. The other point I would make is it's Brandon's office, it's Brandon's recommendation, if if I'm iffy on something, I'm gonna take it at the professional's recommendation, I think.
I, you know, I also, you know, in reading this person's letter as well, um, for the military, she said she went to stay with her daughter for the winter. She maintains her residence as Iowa. She maintains her residence as Iowa, and say you have a daughter who's sick and you're with her for nine months, it doesn't mean you don't live in Iowa. I don't know, I think that.
I think that property to me is a little more, um, I'm a little less concerned since it was sold and it's been transacted now, I mean.
Caroline.
I believe so, yeah, that's what. Yeah, she does have a new address in Iowa, so it that she was, would be a resident of the state, which is highlighted there.
But not Cassoot County.
But not Cassoot County, so now it's Lucas, Iowa, is the address on this letter.
But it depends on what we're disallowing for, if if that credit was, yeah, if that credit was active and she was actively owning that residence and she was just staying with her daughter, depending on the timeline. I mean, I think we have to be careful with these timelines because then, you know, you're talking.
Way into the past.
But you're talking in the past. It's not like it's right now. So.
And she had her house pass July first, yeah.
So, I just think you need to take that into consideration.
You guys have any other questions or thoughts?
Because if she sold her house seven eleven, two thousand twenty-five, that's kind of a neat point for this, that we're just disallowing, isn't it? Cause that was after July first.
It would have been the previous, yeah, it would have been after the new fiscal year.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, there's, if anybody else doesn't have conversation, we should just.
Yep, yep. I just, all of this little missing information, a little, a little bit, but.
You don't have a complete picture, makes it hard to make them.
Right. So. I don't know, I I honestly don't know which which way to go there, but we can, uh, no further discussion, do roll, vote please.
Has.
This is for, this is for the, sorry, the motion is to deny the appeals.
Yes.
That'd be good to restate that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Garmin?
No.
Sticker?
I have to say no.
No?
No.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nass?
Is this both of them or individually?
My, it's, this is, both of them.
This would be both of them. If this doesn't pass, we could have a motion to deal with them individually. Just throwing that out there.
I, I'm gonna say no. And then if we wanna do a motion to do one individually, we can.
I would move to allow the first appeal and and deny the second appeal.
Allow first as in the.
Wilmer.
Wilmer, one, okay. And deny the second?
Yes.
Okay. Does somebody want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Whacker. Is there a reason you wanna deny the first and not, or excuse me, deny the second versus the third, first? Put the words in there.
I mean, the timeline is still fuzzy on that one, um, but it has clearly been transacted and I don't know, the living out of state could be temporary, we don't know that, but, um, there is a very clear different address and change of hands. Granted, it is after the fiscal year, so, I mean, I could be open either way, but I just thought we'd start there and see what everyone's thoughts were.
So your motion is to allow the tax credit for the first appeal?
Correct. I'm open to allowing both, but.
Well, you know, if we're, we can discuss, I I will, I will vote no, because I do feel like, um, there's not enough information and you know, if you go off of her, their letter, you know, they took the time to write the letter and uh, I think the dates are fuzzy and I, I'll vote no, I I, I don't think we should deny.
So, reading the Iowa code again, the homestead includes a dwelling house which the owner in good faith is occupying as a home on July first of the year. So, we argue that she was there then, or owned it or whatever, for which the credit is claimed and occupies as a home for at least six months during the calendar year. If I go on a trip for a few months, doesn't change the fact that it's my home.
Right.
Right.
So, it it depends how do you, how are you defining occupying, you know? Yeah.
And like I said, I'd be, I'd be supportive of allowing both as well, um, I just thought we'd try that, start there, start somewhere. So we had something specifically to discuss.
Mm-hmm.
But if, if in general, we're all willing to, or and the majority's willing to support both of them and keep the appeals, then I'm happy to withdraw my motion too and make that, or support that motion.
I guess I'd be leaning more evidence-wise towards the support of the of the second and not first.
True, but, okay.
To be honest.
I'll withdraw my motion and make a new one to allow both appeals.
Okay, you have a motion? Giving Tammy something to do in the minutes.
Yeah, like I needed that.
Gotta keep life interesting once in a while.
Anybody want to second Kyle's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Garmin.
Does it say I can't second every one of them?
Why not Josh?
You are honorable.
Josh likes to second things. Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I wanna make sure I understand, on the military one, do we know? So she applied for this before July first of twenty-four, or, and we assume she was living there on July first of twenty-four, and we assume she lived there six months in two thousand twenty-four, not fiscal year, in two thousand twenty-four.
Now, she sold her property July eleventh, was that?
Of what year?
Twenty-five.
This year, but that's not relevant. We don't even bring that up, that's not relevant.
How is it not relevant?
We're talking about twenty-four.
Exactly, that's to establish that she owned that property in two thousand twenty-four.
Right, so twenty, what she did in twenty-five is not relevant.
Okay.
It's, it's after the fact, so it's, it, it doesn't matter that she sold the house, but it matters that she sold the house after, so, either way, yeah.
Okay, occupies as a home for at least six months during the calendar year in which the fiscal year begins. So that is a little confusing, yeah, so it is six months during twenty-two-four.
And and the fact that she, she brings up, and I'm, I'm just clearing things up, I'm not taking a brist in here. She, she, he highlighted a resident of this state, that, that's only talking about, that's not talking about where she lives in the state of Iowa as far as our homestead.
Right.
Or our military exemption, it's just.
He's saying she wasn't a resident of the state because of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that what's in italics there is, what he highlighted in yellow is, I don't think that's relevant to the situation either. But maybe I'm not conveying my thought accurately.
Maybe my grandparents go to Texas for almost half the year, but they're still residents of Iowa, I mean.
Well, you can only, you can only get it in one state, one place.
Exactly, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
We don't know what she's doing anything anywhere else.
Right.
No, we have to go off her, her main, which states that she was staying with her daughter and had her mail transferred so that she could pay her bills.
Right.
We're going off what she is telling us.
So. Yeah, that one I can get behind, the other one just seems so vague. Yeah, but if somebody lived there, okay, if you lived there six months during the calendar year in which fiscal year begins, if he moved on July twenty-four, that's when he notified he moved.
In July, so that.
That, that's, he lived there for over six months in twenty-four.
He would have had six months anyway.
Yeah, he would have had six months anyway.
That's right, I think that one, to me, I think is fairly clear now, next year's situation where we're dealing with twenty-two-five.
I was confused with the calendar versus fiscal year thing, yeah.
But, but, yeah, if he's moving in the end of July, you would have had six months completed before that happened.
Right.
So. That's, that's why I was a little clearer on that, because you would have had six months completed.
Okay. There's a motion, second, if nothing else, let's, uh, roll, call vote, please. But this is to, this is to.
Allow tax credit for both.
Allow, allow both of them.
Yes.
Okay, um, Haas.
I'm gonna ask for the reverse vote.
That's fine, Josh.
Yes.
We're gonna go right down. Okay.
Oh, I, I shouldn't be calling him, that's her job.
Whacker?
Yes.
Sticker?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Haas?
Yes.
Nass?
Yes. I like that, I still get a vote on that, so. Okay, motion carried. Well. Yep. Motion carries, we'll inform Brandon with that, I guess. Okay.
We can be important to inform Brandon why to.
Well, absolutely.
It appears that they were both, they may have both been occupied.
Six months out of the calendar year twenty-four.
And in July first.
And July first. Okay. Moving on from that, we have. Moving on from that, we have discussion decision, reimbursement for property damage at four oh one Graham Street in Lakota. This was put on by, Annette Taylor, are you in that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. If you wanna just come, come up here and, and uh, state your case, if, if you will.
I don't know if you all got a chance to look at all the hundred pictures I sent.
Well, I got, not quite a hundred, but I got a few.
Okay, it's just been a nightmare since it started. I was called saying I ran and take some of it out. So a day and a half later and and not only, in between that, my intake was broke through all of that, plus two hundred and sixty and seventy, sixty-five feet of fence to the east. I've got pictures of where the tile is. I wanna know why it was all destroyed. Now I've got water in places I've never had before. I've discussed it with Kyle several times, and I believe I called me as I'm once about it. But it's just, I don't know where, when you said you fixed the tile, I don't know where you fixed it, because this is what I'm getting now. And I've got a complete gully. It's running under the fence now, so.
Which, I don't know which picture that was in the stream of them.
And that county tile, like I said, it's been there since ninety seven, that hole. Here's a picture, there was never water, no grass washed out. This picture was taken back in two thousand nineteen, I never I, I don't, I don't think that county tile was even working. I don't think it even needed to be tore up.
No, it wasn't working, that was the problem. The water could have.
But these are there, you can see in the grass, there's still water. I've got eat, uh, water north of that now where I've never had. It's just pouring in there. And now my new fence, if some of it's water, the posts, I don't know how long they're gonna last. With the water pouring on, so I don't know.
So, one substantial difference between the old system, old tile and the new tile is, the new tile is not perforated, so roots can not get into it. That also does not take water, because the county tiles are not designed to take water, they're designed to transport it. So if you want to drain your land, you need private tile to do that.
I had one, you broke it.
No, that was, that was broken, it had a hole coming up through the ground and that was fixed as well.
In the pictures facing north, you can see where it came from town.
Yep.
And it went out to the creek.
There wasn't.
I never had water there.
There wasn't actually an intake there, there was a tile there that was broken and it forced its way out of the ground and made a hole, but it was not actually a
Because the year we had frozen water lines, I trickled my water in that for five weeks and it took it out, because I had to leave the hydrant running.
Yeah, it was.
Because my water lines were froze.
But it was not a man-made intake, it was.
So why'd you take out so much fence? If you needed thirty feet for roots, you could have stopped at the tile line. I did not need to lose all of my fencing.
For the area that they needed to do the actual work, they need to come out.
Not all that. Like I said, on the north side, why didn't they just open the gate instead of cut, cut the woven wire? I mean, the gate was wired with two pieces of wire, had to be swung open, I sent pictures. They cut every piece of woven wire instead of just opening the gate. I don't know if they thought it was just some abandoned property that someone could come in and destroy or what, I don't know. It was a disaster, I know that. Like I said, I had a webcam on the trees, a deer cam that got buried.
So there's also a couple code sections in four sixty-eight that are important here. One is one thirty-eight, the other is one forty-nine. Um, one thirty-eight is removal of obstructions. The board shall cause to be removed from the ditches, drains and reservoirs of any district, any obstructions which interfere with the flow of water, including trees, hedges, shrubbery and roots thereout and may cause any tile drainage, so obstructed to be related in concrete or any other adequate protection. Such work to be paid for by the drainage funds of the district. The other is one forty-nine, um, and that talks about actual legal consequences for the owner if, um, obstructions are caused. And it allows for a three-day notice to make such repair, and in the event that repair is not made, the board shall do it and charge the entire fee and collect that in the same manner as taxes. So, um, I know we have discussed both of these code sections.
Yes, but where that tile was, if you would have went thirty feet from it, you would not have taken out two hundred and seventy feet of fence.
Thirty feet is not enough to collect.
You told me three roots are thirty feet.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, you did.
I would have never said that because
I got all the text messages.
The typical rule of thumb that I've been told is you'll have one plus times of above-ground height, below-ground as well of roots. So I wouldn't have said.
You did not, yeah.
Was, I haven't heard anything from you in almost an entire year on this topic.
I sent you the picture, the estimate for the fence.
Yeah, and I have heard.
You told me when you first tore out, you brought it up to the board and you said, no, we're not putting your fence back.
And we, we never. And, and that's also another important piece that I have conveyed multiple times, because we have talked about
Here's pictures of where the tile runs.
That on projects.
Here was where all my fence was tore out.
On projects that are not engineered, we have not paid crop damages or fence repair or anything of that nature
You wouldn't put a farmer.
on any projects.
You wouldn't put fence back for a farmer, I had someone to use it for livestock.
Cause my understanding, you don't live on this property, this is property you own on the other town.
Correct. Yeah. That was a lot of money to put that fence back.
Yeah, I know Roger.
The fence is back.
Yeah, I put it in July. I sent Kyle with estimate last fall, they just didn't get here until now.
Were, were these dam, I, when was this project done?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. I knew it was before me, but.
My pictures are, my pictures are dated.
So was, were these damages submitted during the project timeline or?
Yes, he's got every one of them from the get-go.
Uh, last year she sent me a picture, so that was still.
And in twenty-two, we discussed it several times, and I sent you several pictures.
But I mean, before the, cause there's a timeline of.
So this was not engineered, this was.
Oh, this was not engineered, oh.
This was a repair request, it was not an engineer project, and we discussed that multiple times.
Okay.
You called me on a Tuesday, said we're gonna fix that tile, we're gonna take some of your fence, some of your trees out. I went over there Thursday and my entire property was demolished. And there was a hole and they were stuck and it just tore it all up.
Well, they actually weren't stuck, that's what they were doing to put the tile in, because it was very soggy, so I had to pull it down.
I was watching, I was watching, pulled the pop cat out of the hole. I just didn't get half the pictures. You weren't over there.
I was many times.
Not that day. I don't know. I just.
You're seeking reimbursement, is that what you're?
By fencing at least.
From, from the district.
My attorney, yeah, my attorney suggested I go to small claims, so I thought I'd come this way first. I mean, I just don't know how you can just come in and destroy something like that and then say it's okay. It's just, it's been a nightmare, like I said.
So on page one thirty-two of ours, the, I don't know what it, it's a picture that I assume shows the fence and trees missing. And basically the black stretch that runs from the lower left up to the, upward to the right, that's the tile, path of the tile.
Yeah, it kinda cuts right through the heart of that.
Here's the half of the tile.
Which way is the water flow?
From the right to the left, so from the northeast to the southwest.
It just barely comes in on the corner.
Where was the washout?
Um.
The end of fence?
If you drew the hole that's referenced in there as an intake, which wasn't actually an intake, if you drew a line between kinda the corner for property and the little shed off on the left side, it's kinda right halfway in the middle there.
Tile was, right there, southeast corner, there was the intake that took it out. This is where the tile was, but I lost all of that fencing, where the tile was down in that, deep in that corner. Like I said, I seen it there in nineteen ninety-seven when I started running that purchase property in twelve thirty. Never had water going up through there or nothing. I don't know.
We also fixed another section on the east side of town, which her picture referenced, that there's still water.
Yeah.
Standing there, but there was a section fixed after that point in time.
That was in twenty-two, there's pictures of the damage.
Whoa. Now where's the house, it's flooded?
There is no house on here.
No house. Okay, so what's, what's basement, what basement is flooded?
Oh, um, I talked to people that, on the north side of my pen now, the water's coming up and running into it, which is outside of my pen. I talked to Larry around sign then, they said they never had water before, they showed they got it, which I understand they got a lot of water this year. She said, I said, did you see that bubbling out? I don't know, the city water, I think, used to come through that tile and it'd go out underground, because if you look at that hole, there's a perfect circle where a pipe came from the north. So then, yeah, he went to the basement, all the water fell and broke his gut. She said, all she said was, I have a husband sitting in the house with a broken head to do this, so.
There is a.
And Dennis attorney lives right in that grassland right behind it. He said it was the biggest waste of money. He said, uh, the only way they fixed their water problem was um, three sub-homes and a wet basement system. He said this, none of this helped it at all.
Well, it's, it's gonna be limited in what people will see, because it's still a undersized system, it's, capacity is limited. But the tree roots that were in there were very visible, we attempted to televise it and when the old tile was ripped out, there was, it was packed full of rust. So the impacts to the water flow of that district were substantial at the time.
There's so, so much water there all the time now.
There, there is a lot of water in that area. That district serves almost three thousand acres off the top of my head, so it's substantially more than just what's pictured here.
So why was my taxes tacked on so high and nobody else's was?
Actually, they were, everybody in the district.
I talked to everybody. There's one up eleven dollars, seventeen dollars, twenty dollars, mine one up two hundred and seventy. I should have got paid to take the water.
I promise you paid a very small percentage of that bill.
Yeah.
And we could show the actual reports for the numbers of that, but um, there is a city tile for storm sewer that comes kind of right down that driveway on the east side of her property. That has been fixed multiple times as well, where it's not a county tile, so we haven't paid for any of that stuff, but I am aware that the city storm sewer ties in right in that east side and it has been fixed multiple times in this same property.
I guess I'll, I'll make a comment, and, and it looks to me like, from this picture that I'm looking at, again, I'm on page one thirty-two, uh, it looks to me like the even you just don't go in and, and, and cut ten feet of fence and, and, and fix the tile, you gotta think and the, the other thing I wanna say is that trees and tile don't mix, everybody knows that. And the tile is probably there, I mean, these aren't, I, I'm, I'm just guessing, these aren't trees that were planted, these are trees that grew up in a fence line that nobody took care of and, and things have gotta go to, to, to fix it. I don't, I don't know the situation uh, at all, I, I, I don't know what happened, but I do know that trees and tile don't mix. And I do know that.
I just, I don't like I said, I had her had it her whole entire life. Said I started running it ninety-seven and then bought it in two thousand three or four, but never, never had problems, that's why I don't know why I even had to be.
Well, there were, there were significant problems upstream of this, which is exactly why it had to be done, there's a hundred reasons it had to be done, but at the end of the day, even though this was before the recent problems, I, we've seen roots in tile in the last two years because of the dry to wet, to dry to wet conditions that we've had. There's more roots in tile in the last couple years than we've seen in decades probably. So it's, it's unfortunate, it's one of those things that isn't always fun, but at the end of the day, it had to be done to the water flow of this district, it was barely trickling out in the outlet before this.
And how far is the outlet downstream?
So about another half mile to the southwest. So this is towards the lower end. And we started at the bottom and had to work our way up. We still have issues through the railroad tracks. Um, and we are working on that, but communication with the railroad is fun. So, um, if or when that gets taken care of and that gets restored back to what it should have for capacity, there will be even more water coming this way, which is why that had to be fixed. So. As the, the district operates as a whole, top to bottom, you can't have the lower end of it not working.
Right on the east side of my property, there's a bridge where the creek starts, we're over on that gravel road. Why wouldn't some of it be routed that way instead of taking the long way out?
You asked the people to put it in a hundred and twenty-five years ago and then we'll have an answer, but I don't have an answer to that. Um, obviously, it, it's the lay of the land, it's the topography that's associated there, but that's where they laid it and it's our responsibility to maintain it. In the code of Iowa, it has repair to mandatory, you shall maintain them. Improvements or not, and there was an improvement project here that was talked about, um, just before these repairs were made. And there was remonstrance to stop that project. But the caveat there, which was discussed at the time of those public hearings was even if the improvement project doesn't move forward, there are significant repairs that are needed here. So since that improvement project didn't move forward, we started working on repairs. That's what we're obligated to do.
How do you know it's not plugged in before my property?
Downstream.
Yeah.
We televise that, we could get through on televise.
Yes, we can, yeah, through there.
Yep.
So on page excuse me, on page one forty-one, we're looking to the east, southeast, basically straight east.
Yeah, mostly east, yep.
That's the corner where the fence was tore out.
Correct.
Whole south fence, you know, east.
And on one forty-two, again, I don't know what.
I don't see it. Fence is one thing, but it was just a disastrous mess.
And you can see.
I don't talk about it, I get mad.
Further. Upstream too, on that picture.
There's water, water standing there.
There's, there's a lot of water standing even further up.
And the drone pictures were made of last year and we didn't have any significant rain. I text Kyle, I said, I got ducks out there, he says, well, maybe you wanna keep the ducks. Just wanted my intake fixed, so I'd take it out, and you said you fixed it.
That wasn't an intake though.
I wasn't there. Oh, I don't know what you did to it, I wasn't there.
It never was an intake, that's we've had this conversation more times than can tell.
So is part of the reason possibly for all of this water, the fact that that improvement project got stopped? I mean, it, would that improvement project have helped all of this?
The improvement project would have, would have helped on the capacity side of things, absolutely. Um, but it wouldn't have given, um, any changes to what that system would have taken out of the ground, you could have put an intake in, but it wouldn't have been private tile ranching out everywhere.
If it wasn't an intake, why was the water going out of there on my pen all the time?
Because it was a hole in the tile that was clearly open through the ground, and yeah, you're right, it could have taken water, but it was also taking dirt.
This is the video, the field, it's like a lake running through there now, that's, I didn't, it's running into Dairy Open Steel now. It used to go down a hole and go out.
Because it was restricted upstream of your property, so it, the tile had room for water to go in at that point because it was past the restrictions of some of those trees on your east fence line, so, yes.
There's your tile, there's no water going down that intake. I mean, it's all.
Well, there are times where water's gonna go down a hole and there are times when like the water's gonna come up a hole, depending on pressure from above. depending on pressure from above.
Do you know, on our side now, it's not allowed.
Is there any other questions from the board? Right, if not, do we want a motion or any?
Don't know if a motion is necessary unless we're going to reimburse. That'd be the only.
No.
Motion, but that, that's all I'm saying is there's.
Could be to approve or deny reimbursement either way.
We need a motion to deny.
It should probably be on the record since we're discussing it here.
Okay.
Would you be open to a half of it, something? Cause I'm gonna have to put up with this water.
And this is a cost to the district to reimburse, not the county itself, just so you're aware of that.
I don't know.
It would be the drainage district.
Who did the repair of the matters, whatever happened?
Blue methall excavating. But yeah, I was, I was over there many times during the work being completed.
More questions or a motion to any effect or?
I would move to deny reimbursement.
Okay, there's a motion on the board. Does anyone wanna second that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, second by Haas. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stucker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you for your time and, yep. Okay, we are. Anybody need a?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that would be.
All right, let's take a, take a five, ten minute break. Come back for the call set.
She better be he-man.
Morning Donna.
Sure she's happy. She hasn't been happy for three years. I've done everything I could though.
I'm assuming it's gonna be a bit.
Yeah. Put that to the camera or the corporate.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
What, I don't know.
Just so you know, I told them, yeah.
What is it?
It's a four fifty seven or whatever options.
They're here now.
They're here.
They're here now?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, cause he thought it was gonna be a like lighter agenda.
Well. Well. Maybe, maybe we could go to them first and.
Uh, you decide. I'm not, I don't.
Cause we don't have times listed on, how long do you think it's gonna take? I mean, is this a, is this a ten minute discussion? Is this an hour or is it?
I hope it's not an hour. I was hoping one half hour, but they're fifteen minutes to a half hour. It depends on questions too.
Okay.
And I think it's more informational. I, I'm just the.
Well, who tells? An hour member, keep it short.
Well, it's up to you guys, cause I know, I know, you've got a, you've got.
So they just wanna give us a, a feel good thing about what they do?
No, they're an option to split to a different, like.
Go and use somebody else's occupational energy?
No, use, I think, my understanding, again, we just had a conversation. The state of Iowa has the same plan for Ipers, these individuals with Ipers. We could piggyback off of the state plan and went to have this in like many years. It was my initial, you know, I.
Is that a sales pitch basically or what?
Oh, a little bit, yeah. We offer. I mean, I, I think they've offered it since the beginning of time. Yeah, I don't know how much. I don't.
Uncomfortable.
Yeah, I was glad, I was supposed to have another call at nine, so I was like, oh, glad I could walk out. But then the door was like, I haven't done, shoulder it.
I'm glad we had, we didn't have much of a problem with things still here. Anyway.
Okay.
I can tell, tell them to come in and make it short. That's why I'm not sure.
Well, I think, I'm saying that.
Okay, okay.
Two things I wanted to give, uh, the only computer I just had in handouts anyway, so I will just do the handout.
Okay, when they come in, they usually have either go to the chair, the podium?
Okay.
Then I'm just gonna sit kinda back here and help some answer questions if, if there's anything that. So, uh, you've known the past dealt with Gil Evers.
Yes, yes, yes.
So Gil's role has kind of changed a bit. So that's why Sean and I.
Yeah, Sean's been a couple of years.
Yeah, three years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gil, so yes, he's gonna be helping out now with more of this side things.
Yeah.
Stripping Gil out of it, you know, the good old companies.
Evolving, yeah, typically his role was evolving.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But Gil is still around.
Cause I know he's around because our, our treasure is to.
The same company, right? We're all the same, right? We're all, we're all same team.
Yeah.
That's right, comfortable with that. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so the, uh.
So they are willing, this is our chair.
Oh, hi, Dave, thanks for. Sean, mine.
That presented with him, he.
Joshua, hi, Josh, Dave's extra.
Or you can come now or go under wait.
Okay, we're just, you chose the break and leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really doesn't take all that much time to tell.
Where are you guys? Is that from?
Uh, Duane.
Okay.
Yeah, west of mine, so, you betcha. But I'm from, got in with Gil Evers, uh, who's been supporting the county for a long, long time. Cause I'm, I'm from northwest Iowa originally, so I'm from like Calhoun County, Rockwell.
Okay, yeah.
Hey, you can help me with all these counties up here. I'm like, let's do it, so.
For a road trip.
That's right, exactly. Why not?
Yeah.
I gradu-, I graduated from Cal back in the day over in Latimer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So.
They're still going.
They're part, part Hampton right now. There is an attendance center in Latimer, but.
I think they've shared with several different schools.
Couple of, yeah, they try to.
Every time I turn around, they're partnered with somebody else.
High Dave with somebody else, yeah.
Yeah, Cal Dow was. They're, they were in with, um, West Fork there for a bit, weren't they?
I don't, I don't.
With Rock, with Rockwell Swaledale.
Yeah. But, yeah.
Were they actually joined in school then or was it just like?
No, it was just grade share.
Oh, just grade share.
Or share sports or, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, cause back in my day, Rockwell Swaledale, Missouri Thornton and Sheville Chatham. And then it became Rockwell Swaledale, Missouri Thornton, and then it became West Fork.
Right.
And so it just, all of them.
Yeah.
Like, they need to be.
Mine are used.
We have a little bit as well, basically bringing out of the services.
We're gonna go ahead, cause they're up from Des Moines. We're just gonna go ahead and have them briefly present and. Do that before we do the other items.
You guys have preference between me here or there? You'll be right here and you do this?
Yeah, you don't mind. That's perfect.
It makes it good for the cameras to kind of pick up their voice and everything too, so. Have you guys met Gil Evers in the past? Gil's.
I don't know who that is.
Okay, so he's been the rep with Corbridge. We were AIG prior and then long enough back was Valick. So Gil supported the county plan for a long time since it was started in like two thousand two. So they're kinda stripping him away from the little bit of the jo- job change on his side, going more kind of the outside of the employer plan. So that's why Dave and I are now helping him, so just see if anybody. Seems still waiting for.
We're waiting for two board members to come back here.
You betcha.
How's your day going?
How about you?
You doing all right?
So I'll talk about it in auditor's discussion, but you know, we get a new, like, emergency response contract.
Correct.
The contract does not have a button on it. Time still has it. Well, that's not the worst of it. We haven't received any payments from it, so there's no money in there. But, those are being paid.
Well. Okay.
So we don't know who, whose child daddy is.
Make sure they're.
Yeah. Well, and it's some daughter father because they haven't signed.
Right, well, I mean, they haven't committed.
Yeah, right.
Nobody's committed.
Right.
Well.
So that's how many.
Okay.
Having fun?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I did talk to her, she said that the county does make allowance for this as long as the, the, the. So, not, it's.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have.
Well, no.
But she said that the county does provision to allow it, so it's not like, we do, you know?
Mm-hmm.
We need to have a daughter. Cause I love that and I like her.
Okay. All right, I can try to talk to her too.
All right, we are all back, I think, in the room here, so. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and, and have Corbridge, since they're up here from Des Moines, just present while they're here and do a brief presentation and.
Yeah, it should be shortened too and see, see how many questions. Like I said, Donna's asking, you know, probably nothing longer than a half hour. I said, we don't have a half hour worth of, it really comes down, if you have more questions, it really doesn't take long for us to do this. You know, I could try to get there real fast, you want me to?
Go ahead.
It really doesn't take long. So, uh, well, thanks for having us up here, Donna, and then for getting us on the schedule here. So I'm Sean Monahan. I work for Corbridge Financial. Uh, we are the provider of Cassuth County's four fifty seven B retirement plan now that the county kinda has their standalone plan. Uh, and has had it that way, as I was mentioning, Gil Evers, uh, has been helping out with this plan for a few decades, actually a little more than that, I think. Uh, since two thousand two was when this plan was, uh, inceptioned. And, uh, and, and basically bringing another opportunity, basically to try to potentially, uh, improve the plan if there's openness to it. And, and so that's what we're gonna go through today, is the opportunity that every county in the state of Iowa has, that most counties don't even know about. And that is the option to join the state of Iowa's four fifty seven B retirement plan if they so choose. And we are one of the providers of the state of Iowa's plan as well. And so honestly, over the course of the last about, uh, year to maybe eighteen months, uh, we, I've been going out to a lot of the current counties that we do have that have standalone plans and also to new counties that we haven't ever worked with before and saying, hey, this is a pretty darn good option. Let me tell you about it. Uh, it's a pretty good deal to at least consider, uh, for, for all counties in the state. And the biggest reason why it makes a lot of sense to consider is because anytime you go from a small employer, small business, anything like that, to a much bigger business, bigger employer, what can you do? A lot of times you can decrease costs that, that people then pay, um, for anything that you're going to, you know, be buying. You have for a product, anything like that. In economies, economies of scale, you can decrease cost. And that's exactly what the going from a county standalone plan to the state of Iowa plan does. That's the biggest perk, really, is the vast majority, the, the main pro of, of thinking about doing it, is it drastically reduces fees that employees who participate in this would pay on an annual basis. Uh, and so those fees, as, as I first hand out here, this is a good summary of that brick plan here. Kinda gives a bit, good, front page is really just a general overview of what a four fifty seven is. So that's gonna be very, very similar to the county's, uh, standalone plan they have now. And then if you flip to the backside, uh, that's where that shows the investment options, the investment lineup of the plan. And then it might be the, really the, the most important kind of piece of it is, is that right column of the fees that are listed there. And so the, the, uh, comparison there is, is if you look at that, the balance section in the middle here, this balance section is the target date fund lineup that we have. Uh, that, uh, using that as an example, all of those inside of the state of Iowa retirement plan have a fee of point two two percent on an annual basis. So for an example of that, if somebody had ten thousand, for every ten thousand dollars that you have inside of your four fifty seven plan for the state of Iowa, you pay twenty two dollars in fees on an annual basis. So for every ten thousand, twenty two dollars in fees. So very, very, very low cost, uh, index mutual fund way for people to be investing. Uh, comparing that directly to the county's plan now, if you look at the, the, uh, the average target date fund fee is one point eight nine percent on an annual basis. One point eight nine, all the way down to the point two two, you're talking like a seven and a half times reduction in fees, uh, for someone if, if they were just comparing. Uh, and it varies depending on the investment option you choose, but, uh, it is, uh, in, in most cases, just as drastic, if not even a little bit more drastic of a reduction in fees, uh, for, for those, uh, different investment options between the standalone county plan to the state of Iowa plan. Real quick example, and then we'll pause and see if anybody had any questions. Quick example, if somebody had, I had the, so if somebody has fifty thousand dollars inside of the, uh, just compare, fifty thousand in the, in the standalone county plan to fifty thousand dollars in, in the state of Iowa RIC, the Retirement Investors Club. Uh, if you are in the, the county standalone plan, you pay nine hundred and forty five dollars in annual fees, uh, for that plan, for that investment. Whereas if you're in the state of Iowa plan, you pay a hundred and ten dollars in fees. Talking eight hundred bucks of additional account balance. It's gonna continue growing for you every single year. Uh, and just because literally you just have a different plan type, no different investment option at all. Actually, the exact same investment option, uh, just because you went with the, with the, with the state of Iowa plan. Hundred thousand dollars, basically just double that. If you had a hundred thousand dollars inside of the account with the county plan, you're paying one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars in fees on an annual basis. If you look at the, the state of Iowa plan, two hundred and twenty bucks. Um, so you can see how much of a, just a cost savings that is.
And that's annually.
Annually, exactly. Every single year, right? That's taken out every, not only, you know, increased cost every single year, but it really, you kinda talk about compound growth working for you. If you talk about, you know, that's really compounding against you, it's impacting you more and more and more every single year that you continue to pay those higher costs. Uh, and really the biggest reason for that, be like, how, how is it, what's the catch? Why, why is there such a difference here? It really comes down, there is a catch. Uh, it really comes down to the fact that this, this plan is, uh, it's very small, most county plans are. And then also, it hasn't been really been changed all that much since it was created back in two thousand two. Whereas the state of Iowa, uh, updates theirs, average, they, it says on the, the second sheet, I'll go over here in a second. Uh, at mo-, or at the least every six years, they typically do it every five years. Uh, so where they, they keep in updating the plan, reviving it, trying to keep lowering costs over time. Uh, they keep on continually making the plan better and better and better. That's what they've done over the past, you know, twenty years plus. That's why they've gotten kind of improved comparatively and they will continue. Uh, so where they, they keep in, updating the plan, reviving it, trying to keep lowering costs over time, uh, they keep on continually making the plan better and better and better, that's what they've done over the past, you know, twenty years plus, that's why they've gotten kind of improved comparatively, and they will continue doing that, uh, on the go-forward as well. So that's, so that the county, any county that is opted in, doesn't have to make any ongoing changes themselves, the state's managing that administration for you, and they're gonna keep improving the plan. Uh, so with that, let me pause for a second, uh, any questions on what I've said so far?
I have a question, I'm not sure who it's for, so, um, does the board make this change that, that this is, we're gonna go to the statewide plan, or would individuals make it? I mean, is this a, one...
Great question, yeah.
One or all, I guess I...
So in order for you to be involved in the state of Iowa plan, it's a board decision, and then as far as the, what an individual would want to do, uh, the, as far as the, the, so Corbridge wouldn't continue, if you decided as the board for the county to, to join the state of Iowa plan, Corbridge, our back office said, we're not gonna manage the county plan and the state plan, so essentially then, anybody who has the Corbridge plan now, they would basically, their, their option would now become the state of Iowa plan.
So if the board approves this today, everybody that's on, uh, the county plan will be converted, if they wish, to the state plan, or drop it, that's the only two options.
Exactly, yeah. Or I think that there is, is, uh, Nationwide, another, I think Nationwide's another provider, maybe Equitable as well, is that right? Uh, maybe some smaller providers, I think, from what I've gotten, uh, kinda heard from Gil, uh, and so, yeah, then they could essentially, you know, continue working with those, but man oh man, when I've done the comparisons on the Nationwide standalone costs, I did that for Winnebago County last summer, uh, it was almost the exact same situation of, you know, it's kind of like, hate to call something a no-brainer, but it's kinda like, man, from a fees perspective, this really is a no-brainer, let's just make sure, you know, make sure you understand it, and make sure you're bought in on it, and it's in your best interest and things to, to think about doing the state's plan.
So this isn't an additional, just to clarify?
Yeah.
This isn't additional, this is replaced?
It would kinda be a replacement, yes, absolutely. Yep, good clarification.
Taking everybody out of the others.
There's no, there's no problem getting money out of the others?
So that's a, so that's a, it is a case by case situation, where we have to make sure that there is no, but on, on the other, uh, counties that I've worked with, who I've had Nationwide, there was no, I've transferred folks over, uh, but we have to agree, we have to confirm that with every individual plan we've worked with. Um, but we could ask that question, essentially, to Nationwide and say, hey, if there was a, if we had a new plan offer, you know, typically, uh, you know, inter... Be the, to be the plan, yeah, yeah, then...
You gotta get out of Nationwide, right, if, if...
You don't, no, you don't necessarily, you don't have to get out of Nationwide, that's where you'd have, you, you would have to shut down the Corbridge plan, as, uh, we wouldn't run both, but if you had Nationwide, the standalone county plan, that would be a board decision, if you wanted to maintain the Nationwide side, you could, and do the state of Iowa plan with us, side by side.
So you could offer both?
Yeah, you can offer both and let people make the, make the decision that they wish, yeah, could do that.
And then whether or not, if, 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 if we decide to offer both, whether they switch to Corbridge?
Yeah.
Is dependent on who, Nationwide?
If the individual employee switched to Corbridge?
If they wanted to switch.
If they wanted to.
Can they move their money?
So that's where, in, all the instances that I've seen, the answer was yes, but we just need to reconfirm that with every individual plan, if that makes sense. And that's something you can do with the whole, you can, you can always ask that question to Nationwide, to make sure.
So, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to contribute to the previous plan?
The previous Corbridge plan.
But they could maintain that account separately?
Correct, yes, they can maintain that account, it doesn't have to close or anything like that, they just can't do ongoing contributions.
You can't do new contributions, the new contributions would have to go to the state plan.
Yep, exactly.
Okay. And the biggest difference is the fees that are charged?
That's the, that's kind of the, really the hook line and sinker, to be honest with you, of where, when I do the comparison myself, it's, it's a, man oh man, if I, I, I say this to every county that I've gone in front of, uh, and I've converted about a handful now of counties into the state's plan, I would, I always say, it's if I was an employee at Cassuth County, I would want the state of Iowa plan, and it's, it's honestly, it's almost night and day, really, I mean, it's just, it's not even close, uh, with, with the overall fees that are paid.
Corbridge is not representing somebody else, it is the entity, and it's headquartered where?
Corbridge is headquartered in, in Houston, but we have a regional office in, in Kansas City, and then Dave and I, and then a few other, but there's about, how many, eight of us, Dave and I, one, uh, so I live, we live in, uh, Des Moines, there's three in the Des Moines area, a few in, few in both Western and Eastern Iowa.
So, so no doubt Nationwide, I, I don't know how long Nationwide's been in the investment business, but, but no doubt Nationwide is ju, it can, spit it out, I'm sorry. Nationwide could offer this same low rate, they're just choosing not to.
They, they're not a part, the reason that we can offer such a low rate is because of the opportunity to join the state of Iowa plan, and Nationwide is not a part of this statewide.
So you sold the state of Iowa on Corbridge?
Yes, so, yeah, we are, we are one of the providers, that's what I spend a lot of my time also doing, I, I work with counties and I work with state offices, uh, with their 457, so, yeah, we are in the, um, state of Iowa plan, all state employees.
Is Nationwide also?
No, they're not inside of the state of Iowa plan. There's four total providers, there's, uh, Corbridge, Voya, Empowered, Horstman, are the four providers of the state's plan.
Do you know how many employees you currently have that...
I think there's about seventeen currently contributing, and there's, I believe it was thirty-six with account balances, uh, that, that are currently, uh, current account balances for county. Yeah, for Cassuth County, you betcha, for the standalone plan, yeah.
Is that something where you could check with anyone in that list that's willing to and see if they're, or see what their comparable situations would be?
Yeah.
I mean, fees, if their balance can transfer, any issues that way, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
That might be valuable.
As far as their balances that we have with them, we can convert, you know, from...
There'd be no issue there?
There would be no issue, yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, so it would only be outside ones, which, okay?
Yeah.
And if we can, if we can maintain that, it wouldn't affect anything to those current ones that are on?
Yeah.
The program that you have, and the only difference would be lower admin fees?
Exactly. Yeah, lower fees to the, uh, employees on the, on the go-forward, yeah. And it really comes down to the fact, so actually, from, from an income perspective, for, for, for Corbridge as a company, with the, you know, you look at the same dollar ones, they're making less in income by do ma, by making this switch, so actually, as far as, you know, they're not making a catch, Corbridge actually, as a company, actually will make less, I just know, you know, if I'm doing my due diligence for all the counties we're supporting, this is the, in their best interest, right? It is by minimizing fees as much as they can, uh, and trying to give it that way, and I'm, I am a salary advisor, and so that's what I can try to help bring to the table, is let's get you into the most appropriate, uh, investment option that you've got available, inside your plan, so.
Again, for the risk of being ignorant, Corbridge is offered to county employees now as one of our options.
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's been more expensive, but if we join through the Iowa, it's gonna cheapen it.
Exactly, yep, yep, you just, great summary.
So it'd convert our current Corbridge offering to the new Corbridge offering through the state?
Through the state, yes, sir.
I don't think anybody will complain about having less fees.
Talking about it, it's gonna have to, let's make sure, but man oh man, I'm telling you, there's, it's kind of a, yeah.
There's no hidden terms in the...
No, no, the only thing that would be, so then as far as to the employer, the bottom of this second sheet here, so this sheet is a summary of what services, if you have your standalone plan, this first column here, what that standalone plan, you basically, you, you do everything, you have all of the different administration tasks, you kind of run your own plan, correct? Whereas if you flip over into the state of Iowa plan, the, those top four things are all that the employer, the county would have to do on the go-forward, and then the state of Iowa, that's RIC, Retirement Investors Club, they would, that's what they call their 457 down there, uh, they would take care of everything else. So the vast majority of the administration of the ongoing plan would be performed by the state.
And then we'd pay those fees on the bottom?
Then at the bottom, exactly, so there is a small...
And that would be new?
That would be a new fee to the county even, so there's a, a one-time startup fee of anywhere from a hundred to four hundred dollars, and that's not per employee, that is in total, uh, so it's a, you know, kind of a, uh, not, but some people are like, well, you know, per employee, no, 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 not at all, just a one-time startup fee of that one hundred to four hundred bucks, and then an annual fee of fifty to five hundred, depending upon the, uh, just the employee headcount, the state has a... Bigger counties would have closer to the five hundred, smaller counties are gonna have closer to the fifty.
Do you know what that top and bottom end is for number of employees, times the formula, whatever?
Would you know?
Like, where, where?
I don't exactly know, it, some of it sometimes depends upon, uh, like, the setup of, of the administration work they have to do and things like that, so they kinda have their own way of figuring out exactly. I would, how many, how many, what's that count at, Cassuth County, does anyone know?
Your total employee?
Our total or el, or...
Eligible, it would be eligible, yeah, eligible.
Eligible?
Probably a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty, yeah, that's gonna be on the low range.
I'd say we'll probably be higher than, no, yeah.
For full time, maybe.
One twenty to one fifty.
I'd be pretty confident that that's definitely gonna be below the median, you know, you're gonna be on the lower, lower fifty percent of that total fee.
And that, that annual fee is not per person, that's just one, one fee, yeah, so you're talking about a couple hundred bucks, basically, on an annual basis, and then that goes straight to the state, that's not to Corbridge, that's just to the state for kind of helping their ongoing maintenance of the additional entities that they manage, yeah. Yeah. Very immaterial.
Exactly, yeah, kind of dropping the bucket overall. Uh, any questions? As far as, let's say, you guys at some point, you know, it's like, hey, let's get going on this, what are, what kind of steps, uh, so basically, it's, it's board approval, I would just need an email, uh, from, from any administration letting me know that the board has approved to move forward, and then I start to engage the state, the contacts who run the RIC plan at the state, and I say, hey, Cassuth County has voted to, to join, you know, they, here's their request, can you, can we get the ball rolling, and then they send a data sheet out, and they start collecting information, we kinda get a project going. The state does a little bit of setup on their side, we also would do a setup on our side from a payroll perspective, with someone, whoever that, uh, appropriate project and payroll person here would be, and then there's a little bit of a lead time to make sure all those things are running smoothly before we could officially kind of turn that on and, and have the new plan running.
So regardless of what we decide, the employee has the choice to leave their money with Nationwide, they just can't contribute any more?
They could still, if you decided to continue the Nationwide plan, they could still keep contributing to Nationwide.
Okay.
It's only our...
It's the, it's not the current Corbridge plan?
Yeah, it's only our current standalone plan.
Hey Jim, okay, gotcha.
If we, if you decided to move forward with the RIC, our company's not, we're, we're not gonna manage the two standalone plans, both at Corbridge, if that makes sense?
And is that, that they could convert anything currently at Corbridge across over to? And one that it would actually affect would be able to convert?
But it would be an employee's choice, whether or not to convert?
Yes, yeah, and then I can help up with that, you know, breaking that down, if I make sure they should and want to, and...
Just so the...
Yeah.
Just so the employees have that say, because it's the employees who are choosing to contribute, I don't wanna take that away from them.
Take it, take their options away, yep, I couldn't agree more, you betcha.
Okay.
The only thing that would be taken off the table for them would be continuing to contribute to the Corbridge standalone county plan.
Is there anything on a calendar year basis or fiscal year basis that would be beneficial to help correlate a switch, or it doesn't really matter?
Not really, yeah, no.
Does it just flip from one...
Yep, just flip from one to the other, you betcha, yeah.
Do we pay a corresponding fee to Nationwide of the other one also?
I don't believe, Tammy, I think, do you have any information on that? I don't think we pay any.
No, I don't know.
I've never seen a fee.
I don't know.
Cause we don't currently pay a fee to Corbridge, so it's a...
I think a lot of times when it's the, when it's the, when it's kind of the, what, they really are, a lot of times with the small employer standalone plans, it's an annuity base rather than a mutual fund-based investment, and a lot of times, all of those annuity costs, there is no cost to the employer, it's all put upon the employee.
So what are your fees, like, on the Corbridge plan now?
Right now, so the, so as I said, that was the example that I gave.
No, no, but what, what are they on the individual plan?
On the, the county standalone plan, so the, the target fund, for instance, if I did that compare, the county's target fund was one eighty-nine.
That was Corbridge.
Compared to the point two-two, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Yep.
You betcha.
You betcha. Let's see, any other questions? Can I actually get this going, you know, at any point in time, I would just tell people, like, I, I really do truly believe, you know, a hundred percent that if I were a county employee at any county in Iowa, from all the county plans that I've seen, so I'm kinda like, hey, I would, if I were the employee there, I would wanna be, have the same...
I guess I'll make a motion to, to, for the county to join the RIC?
RIC, yeah.
Through the, through the state of Iowa.
I second. Okay, there's a motion by Haas, second by Stecker, to the county to join the RIC. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
So, yeah, if anybody just wants to send me, whoever would like to just send me an email, just letting me know that that's been...
The game, is the email on here?
Yeah, you betcha, yeah, it works, and I'll get the state involved. And as far as kind of the project, so now it's a little bit, it's a little bit of the project, we'll go through all the conversations there, and then I will be available for the go-forward to make employees aware, bring them all the information, webinars, in-person meetings, one-on-one meetings, all of the like, to make sure we do this the right way, and make sure everybody's well informed about what they want to do.
So, now that we've started this project, the employees are still able to continue contributing until the cut over the...
Correct, we'll have a cutoff date, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Project, where it's like, okay, we're gonna turn this on, you know, maybe whatever, throw out a month, Jan-1, whatever it is, uh, now the, the last time you'll be able to contribute to the whole plan, December thirty-first.
Okay, so we're not gonna be, we're not stopping them from being...
Right, yeah, yeah, we'll keep going until the new ones are ready to go.
Yeah.
We have, on average, you know, they're, they do ask us to say, it does take time, and you never know how the projects go, or there are roadblocks, so they say maybe somewhere around three months. I've seen some go much quicker, I've seen some actually take longer, so, uh, they like to throw out that potential three-month timeline, and we'll just work that through with, with county, so.
So it may be kind of a, so, you know, January one might be a logical time to do, it is kind of once, how busy is our project team, and how quickly can they get everything all set up, et cetera, et cetera, but...
Yep, we'll figure it out.
Sean and I will be in communication with Donna to kind of put together...
Timelines.
Timelines, and, yes, all that sort of good stuff.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
Reach out anytime, I left my business card in there as well, so, please, think of any questions later, or anything like that, reach out, yeah.
Sounds good.
Awesome, thanks everybody, thank you.
Happy to be here.
Is that, how long do we go? I don't even know, ah, fifteen minutes or fifteen minutes?
Two hours.
Thanks, guys.
I have more of those kind of summaries, any other folders for anybody else? Donna, give her the answers.
Yep. I'll say go back to Des Moines. Okay, we will go ahead and come back in our agenda here to closed session, or discussion decision closed session per Iowa Code twenty, we didn't change that.
Twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-one point five J, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate.
Motion.
Is there a motion, okay, a motion by Stecker?
Second.
Second by Whacter. Discussion. Hearing non-Rockwell vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Mas?
Yes. All right, we are in closed session, we'll get things transferred over, Molly knows the drill, she's out.